Assistant Principal Mr. Bell, please raise your hand. I have officially introduced her to our staff and she's going to be a wonderful part of our family here. She's going to be our Director of School Climate and Culture, which is going to be wonderful here. Kat Semerit. Mr. Nattick from the newspapers, a round of applause for Mr. Nattick from the newspapers. First of all, some of our panel here, I'm going to save your round of applause to the end, because we want to hit you, we want to basically clap for all of them. So I'm going to make the announcements of everybody involved, then we'll clap at the end. So first on our panel, basically what they're going to do is listen to our students. They all have pieces of paper in front of them, they're going to put their opinions, good, bad, indifferent, what they think, what the kids made the case about the uniforms. Because again, this is not about the dress code, this is about changing our uniform policy. And then we're going to make copies of it, and then we're going to give it to the local school council right after this meeting, okay? So first we have, just raise your hand, and again, no applause to the very end. Ms. Kat Semerit, she's a teacher, raise your hand, Ms. Kat Semerit. No applause, no applause. Trent, Trent, raise your hand over here, he also a teacher. Sharon Manjack, raise your hand, Sharon. We have Adriana Vera, Adriana, raise your hand. Lisa Collier, Lisa, okay, small business owner. Mike Peterson, who's a teacher over at Wright Junior College in the Literature Department, Mike. Lysia Schweiger, you know her as our local school council chairperson. Kelly McGinnity, she's an attorney, community member. Susan Spencer, Susan, raise your hand. Oh, Susan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Susan. Letitia Jarrett, Letitia. Melissa Mural. LaShawn Wallace. Sharman Dorch. Marilyn Faulenberger, Marilyn. Ann McManaman. And the last guy, I kind of saved for last because I was so impressed with him. My man had one of our parades here during registration. Before I tell you his name, he's, his reason for once again the panel, he's very concerned about the welfare of the future of this school, very good. But, this is what I was impressed about. My family has served in the military of this great nation since the early 1600s. And were military on the other side of the ocean before that. So can we have a nice round of applause for everybody, and Nick Spencer, please? And with that said, especially since Nick's been in the military, we all know what today is, right guys, 9/11? So what I'm going to ask everybody to do is just bow your head in a moment of reflection for everybody, about 9/11, here we go. Okay, thanks everyone. Okay, now let me introduce our students that are going to make their case, okay? And you can do a round of applause every time you have a kid. So first we have a senior, his name is Matt Mock, he wants to go to Stanford University. He's an LSC representative, he's a captain of the track and across country state. Our next student wants to go to the university of Chicago, he's an IB. He's founder of the Dress Code petitions, initiator of serious discussion within the LSC over dress code. He's a senior, Jasper Oliver, Jasper. Our next student is on the volleyball team, I've seen her play three times so far. She has a wicked serve. She's the captain of the girls' track team, she's also an IB member. She wants to go to Loyola University. I want a round of applause for Pansy Newgum. Our next student wants to go to UIC, president of the break dancing club, which I'm the moderator of. Junior William Ward, William. Our next student is also a junior, who wants to go to the University of Chicago, IB, scope of IB, and also on the track team, Sabrina Vera, stand up Sabrina. Our next student is a sophomore. She wants to go to the University of Colorado at Boulder, she's on the track team. Nice round of applause for Kyla Kanon-Roski. Next student wants to go to MIT, on the jazz band, marching band, he's an Eagle Scout. Nice round of applause for Alex Yankee. Our last person who wants to go to the University of Illinois, Urbana, Urbana. IB student, highly involved with the drama department since freshman year, Kevin Cole, Kevin, stand up. So right now what I'm going to do, we have 10 questions, and I'm going to turn it over to the moderators for the night, so we have Mr. Les Pleva and Anita Bernagi. Round of applause for our moderators.
Good afternoon. Our first question will be, do school uniforms promote more academically focused students?
Thank you, Mr. Pleva.
In regards to student academic focus, there's been what is considered no correlation between uniforms and school safety or academic performance as stated in the book, "School Uniform Movement: And What It Tells About American Education", by Dr. David Brunsma, Doctor of Sociology at Virginia Tech. And I think this is really displayed here when we look around at our student body. Ever since I got together petition for the dress code, I've seen students who complain about the uniform being uncomfortable, distracting, troublesome when clothes tend to wear out. If anything, I feel that it kind of restrains our student body, prevents them from achieving their full potential. I think that removing the specific uniform, the idea of college dress, these required, required, our clothes clothing will really actually help our student body improve as a whole.
To furthermore add about academic focus in students, a lot, big portion of academic focus has to do with teachers. And I've gotten quotes from 3+ teachers about saying, "I don't have to worry about telling kids, 'You're out of uniform, you're out of uniform, you're out of uniform.'" And that was a big distracting portion of the class, because you would often get a kid that would say, that would not just simply not comply and you would waste five minutes total of time. So, on the teacher's point of view, that is also, it shows that school uniforms are distracting to the classrooms, and that creates a case for academic focus being created without uniform, with having a de facto way of students dressing within the school. Thank you.
Our second question, do school uniforms promote school pride?
I'm back. Okay, so, school pride has many different types of ways to be seen. There's the eyes of the students, and then there's the eyes of parents and adults, and the eyes of people who are not part of our school community. When people see Taft being led out of school, you know, at 303 every single day, they, prior to this year, they have seen kids all dressed in the same colors, you know? Blue's a nice color, but gray and white, those are not, you know, happy colors. Now, I have heard quotes that say, "That makes us look like a prison." We are not the school that should be associated as a prison. I've also gotten several quotes from security guards saying, "Kids are much, much more happier in the hallways, showing off their pure individuality." Now, with that being said, school pride was really low when kids were saying, "You know, I was, you know, being heckled by a security guard in the morning, they may call my parents about this because I had the wrong colored shirt, you know, it just ruined my whole morning for me, I wasn't focused for the first day of class until I had lunch and, you know, I got some food in." Now, with that being said, if there's no school pride coming in from outside views and from inside, kids saying, "I'm just not happy with the way I'm being seen and how I see myself through the school." Now, school pride was shown in kids that weren't able to get out of uniform when they had games, they were coming in suits and ties. And on Fridays, when kids would wear athletic uniforms as Pansy is wearing right there. That is a sense of school pride, not uniforms that makes us conform to a certain type of uniform.
Hello. To add to what Matt said, forcing the Taft polos upon students makes them not like the school colors as much as they should. Like, having to wear the same colors every day gets boring. And that isn't something that you should think about your school's colors. And I think that it's important that people should represent Taft how they want to, and when they want to, and with whatever they want.
Our next question is, do school uniforms promote principal behavior?
All right, I'm back now. Okay. They do not, no, they did not. Okay. When people, people want to be able to express themselves, and very important of high schools is learning who you want to become and where you want to go in life. And I think an important way of expressing yourself is choosing what you want to wear. And expression is very important. Also, it gives people a responsibility to dress appropriately. If giving people freedom to choose what to wear gives them responsibility, and with that responsibility, they act more adult, like, more mature. And that's all I have. Also on the topic of promoting principal behavior, going back to one of the previous questions, we stated how having our current uniform gives that idea of a prison mentality, of like, being forced to dress in this uniform that's gray, white, boring without any expression. That really does create that idea of a prison mentality, feeling like you're being punished for something by being forced to wear this dress code. So, it creates that sense of, rather than being innocent until proven guilty, it makes you feel as if you're guilty of doing something wrong, something randomly wrong, until you can prove otherwise by having this behavior. So that creates a victim complex within students. And even though this is just in the very slightest, it still has a noticeable effect on the entire Taft population, because it makes people more aggressive, more likely to have outbursts, and more likely to get in other forms of trouble, because they feel as if they've already been victimized. So, in, rather than promoting principal behavior, the uniform that we have currently creates that victim complex and results in a more unruly school. Thank you.
Will the lack of school uniforms pressure families to spend more money on clothes?
In regards to pricing of school uniforms versus regular clothing, there was a survey conducted during the third quarter of work ethic of 2014, so last year, during which time, survey was distributed short of four questions. Some parents in here may have actually taken it. And from the survey, we received response from around 350 to almost 400 people. And of that total, 100% of parents who responded to the survey positively, suggesting that they felt that dressing had served little or no purpose, agreeing the prices for clothing here at the school were too high. So if anything, it would be the other way around. That, the concept, the idea would be that school uniforms themselves would put financial pressure on families. And uncounted the portion of the total disagreeing with the idea that, with the idea that the dress code was useless, still felt that clothing items here were priced unfairly. And actually, we have two examples of that right here to people who have personal stories, which I don't share, so if you want to come on up, you can use.
Hi, everyone. So, as a freshman walking in four years ago, I was very intimidated by the idea of having a uniform. I came from an elementary school where there was just a simple dress code, which is what we're aiming for now. And with having, walking in, knowing the fact that the school had a uniform, I was really intimidated by how much I had to buy. And gratefully enough, it wasn't out of my pocket, it was out of my mom's pocket. And when she bought all that stuff, she literally told me the price, and I was like surprised by how much, how high the cost was individually. I bought, I believe, six polos in total, plus two sweaters. I mean, it's pretty cool here in Chicago. And all of it cost you about approximately $400 for one student. In my family, there's two students that went to Taft. I wasn't able to share a polo with my sister because she was using it, so my sister had to, my mom had to buy more polos. In reality, she spent about $800 on polos and uniforms. Not to mention, there's also the pants part, where you have to wear a certain color pants, dark polos, or jeans. That was also something that I did not have. So in addition, my mom actually spent just about $1,000 for clothes just for Taft.
Last year, I was a freshman, and I was, just as Pansy was, kind of intimidated by the dress code. Wasn't really the uniform, I wasn't really sure how much I needed. And when my mom saw the prices, she was not too happy. And when we bought the total of polos and sweatshirts, it rounded to about $300. And given that was a lot of money that was going to strictly, strictly uniform, my mom and I decided to go thrift shopping. Well, thrift shopping did not have the colors, did not have the sizes, and it became more of a problem than it was needed to be. So.
Some parents may also believe that they should be pressured into buying more expensive clothes in regard of their child being bullied. I don't believe that students will be bullied based on how they dress, because there have been little to no instances of any child being bullied about not having the newest shirt from neighbor coffee or Fitch.
Just a quick example, this shirt I'm wearing, it looks pretty nice, right? Yeah. I got this shirt for $7, and that's like half the price of a Taft polo.
I'm back, hi. So in addition to that, there was actually a modified uniform that we're talking about, where instead of having polos, we'd have t-shirts, and not necessarily touching on that. However, if you do, we're... So there was one time where I was walking to school, and it was during the winter. I wasn't aware of what this Wednesday under dress code thing last year, where during September, you would be able to get out of dress code for every Wednesday. However, school started in August. So when I get, when I walked into that school, like, in the front, into the main entrance, Ms. Kanon said, "Where's your polo? You should know by now." The first thing I said was, "Wait, we're supposed to be in dress code today?" He said, "Yes," because it's not in September, apparently, I didn't realize that. But the first thing he said was, "Go buy a polo." I had, because of that, because of me simply forgetting a polo and not realizing I wasn't supposed to be on dress code, he wanted me to pay another $14 to $17 just for a shirt for one day, which I already had six at home. At this time, my sister already graduated, so I had six and hers, therefore I had a polo.
Do schools, school uniforms promote a safer environment?
All right, can someone answer this question? What separates Chicago negatively from every other major city in the United States? Can someone answer that question?
Death rate.
Death rate and gangs, correct? Now, the five main gangs of Chicago that can make any sort of difference are, and I quote, gangster disciples, the black disciples, the P-stones, by swords, and Latin kings. Now, the nearest gang activity that has been noted by Chicago Magazine, they created a map that, nice color coded with gangs and everything, it's a really nice map, stated that the nearest gang activity, and to add to that, it was gang activity that was not affiliated with these five main gangs that I just listed here, was on Irving Park and Cicero. Now, that is in Southern Portage Park, where the neighborhood schools are Foreman and Shertz. Now, Shertz has the uniform, but Foreman does not. We were able to speak to the assistant principal at Foreman, Dr. Shadagakis, last year, and she has suspended the uniform, and she says that it's going swimmingly for them. And they are in, what, some people would say is a gang area. Now, our school has closed its borders, sort of, since the 90s. Where were seen as a gang school, where there was hard recruiting from gangs outside of the school. Those kids have graduated, these kids are not here anymore. And either way, if we're implementing a dress code because of a shock, even if there were gang members in the school, are we implementing a dress code on the whole majority of students because of a tiny minority that feed on attention like this? I don't believe that's just or fair in any case. And in respect to people saying, "Well, if we have a uniform, we can track outside or run away." First of all, we have IDs. And even if we're not wearing them, we have them on us immediately, so we could show them that. Second of all, if we have a uniform, it's not that hard to get a hold of a Taft polo to walk in and conform, as we all do to this, you know, demeaning colors, as you can see right here. Exactly, so, we all have IDs. There's not that big question of safety. And if you ask security guards around here, there has not been major safety issues in several years, and fights have gone down significantly. There have been no major fights in the Taft school for these past two weeks. And last year, if you look at last year and three or four years ago, the figure is enormous, how different, how big the amount of fights were four years ago to what they were last year, when there was more opportunities to get out of dress code, when you brought in dog food or something for National Dog Day or something. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Will a change of the school uniform policy lead to an increase in students ignoring or violating school rules and policies?
So, in reality, if you think about the questions that were asked before, it is very similar to the question, do school uniforms promote principal behavior? And I'm not too sure if you really remember what happened, but basically we said, "No, it does not." With this, will the lack of school uniforms, or will the change of school uniform policy lead to increases students ignoring or violating school rules and policies? It actually won't. Because with the school uniform, I have witnesses, and I've heard stories of many other people from different parts of school and also different programs, that when students are wearing the uniform, they want to refuel. They want to get out of the dress code, they want to get into something that they're comfortable in, something that's them. One example that I had was, it was winter, and in the winter, we're allowed to wear a plain black sweater. I believe it's black, if not has to be plain. The student was wearing a plain black sweater. However, a security guard chased after them and said, "Change into your polo." I personally did not understand why they were chased after that for that reason. However, they weren't doing anything wrong. With that being said, basically, anything with a uniform, students will want to refuel. Teenage kings is the best.
I do not believe that removing the uniform will increase people ignoring rules, because many of the rules are based around the uniform. And if someone isn't in a uniform, they're like yelled at, or they're punished. And if people don't have a uniform, then there's less reasons for them to be yelled at or viol, or, and there's less rules to be violated. So, if anything, removing the uniform will decrease the amount of violated rules.
Hi, so if I can add on to that, Taft has had uniforms for as long as I've been here, and I've been here since seventh grade, so it's going to be five years. And not having a uniform for these past two weeks has really been a privilege that I can not only respect, but appreciate. So therefore, that respect and appreciation has transcended into also following other rules. And I can contend to actually experiencing kids respecting the security guards, because security guards no longer have to chase after students for something as simple as wearing the wrong colored undershirt. So I think that if we do give students these privileges, not only will they respect it, but they will also appreciate the other privileges that they have by recognizing them more. Thank you.
What are we going to do with the individuals that wear saggy pants?
All clothes that are worn have to be school appropriate, both in content and fit. And if it is seen that they are not appropriate in content and fit, then they will be sent to the teens, and it will be resolved by the teens.
If you have pants, you can sag. This is not a question that should be dealt with. If we have a uniform or we don't have a uniform, we'll sag and stop? Or will, if we have a uniform or we have dress code? No, that's not a reason, if you have pants, you can sag, and that is a school culture. And now we have a specialist that has to do with school culture, that will provide us with a sense that we have respect for ourselves, and we will pull our pants up. And I believe that as the years keep moving forward, and we hit this exponential increase in positivity, that the saggy pants will finally be brought up.
I personally believe that uniform causes more students to sag their pants, because that is their way of individualizing themselves. Because with a uniform, it's kind of hard to be yourself. So perhaps they're sagging their pants because that's who they are, or because they're just trying to be rebellious. And for example, today, in my Chicago history class, I saw a boy that I saw often last year with his pants like almost down to his knees. Today, I saw him wearing a belt.
Okay, this is the last question. Since 20% of our surveys supported modifying uniforms, how should we respond to them?
Okay, so, just for clarification here. This survey, which is referred to in these questions, is 20% of our surveys supported modifying uniforms. This is a survey that was conducted during the orientation period of this year for both parents and students to come together and fill out. And I'm not entirely sure of how many people did. 350 to 400 people yielded a 51.4% yay for... 350 to 400 people yielded a 51.4% yay for dress code modification. If not dress code, then certainly rule of the uniform. And you may notice today, for example, that all these fine people are all dressed up. They're trying to show you the best that they can possibly be, but I don't think that the best that you can possibly be is something that's necessarily all the time. So, for example, today, I'm here, I'm wearing jeans and a shirt. This is what I've seen the past couple of weeks when I've been here. I've been in the halls, I've seen a lot of jeans, I've seen a lot of t-shirts, I've seen people with, let's say, sweatpants, I've seen camouflage, I've seen all kinds of different clothing, which normally wouldn't be allowed. Students are handling the responsibility associated with this very, very well. They do seem to respect the whole concept of having this new set of responsibilities. So what this provides is a feeling of, it's a feeling of power for them, honestly. So it almost seems as though with this sense of power, they're willing to be responsible enough to maintain it, and they're willing to respect and follow other rules, provided they're given some leeway in this sense.
Okay, with this survey conducted, I know a lot of people, including myself, were a little confused with the wording, because it said modified uniform. A lot of people, like throughout this year, I've had a lot of misunderstandings with what is a uniform, and with what is a dress code. And I think that confusion changed, altered the results of the survey, because when people think modified uniform, they might be thinking of modified dress code. So, I don't know. I don't mean to discredit the survey, but I was almost confused when I took it. I almost marked modified uniform when I meant to say abolish uniform, modify dress code. I think that's what it was. And anyways, I have another thing to say too, it's a little off-topic. I don't know if anyone said it yet, but without having a uniform, everyone seems so much happier. All the students, all the staff, everyone. That's all I have to say.
Kevin did point out that the results of the survey weren't exactly stellar, but one thing that I'm not sure everyone is aware of, which was stellar, was at the beginning of last year, right before I came to the LSC with the whole recent change of the dress code, I sat down and I opened Microsoft Word on the computer, and I decided to make a petition. And I created a simple document. At the top, it would have name, age, grade, and enrollment status at Taft High School. And I presented the survey first to my IB class of thirty-something people. The survey wound up being taken, or not the survey, the petition wound up being signed by about 500 people within five days until the release date. And for the categories specified above, I really wanted to point out with age and grade and enrollment status, that people of all different backgrounds, all different ages, all different enrollments at Taft, who are willing to have this change. We had people signing from ATB, we had people from IB, we had people from JROGC, we had people from Rego, which we had ages 13 through 18 signing this petition. Within the end of the second week, we had over a thousand signatures, and at that point was when I took it to the LSC, which at the time was in the hands of Ms. Capitella. And 11 months later, we are here, after all of that work, two surveys, one petition. And what we're really asking is, it's simple. All we need to do is revise what we have, is it good enough, and do we want to change it? Because if so, let's change it. Thank you.
So for those who don't believe in the aid of actions to make a difference, we see, as Jasper has pointed out, that following through on your beliefs and organizing people, you can make a difference. We'll have our last statement by Matt Meyer.
We've been late in attendance every single day since the first day of school. Round of applause, please. I believe a major, major reason for that is that we have more freedom now. We are a changed student body. Kids see that the momentum has started rolling. They see administrators that want to work for them, they see security guards working with them, they go to their counselors, they're getting good with their college, with their grades. We are a changed student body, and this is the new Taft. This is the new Taft.
Thank you, everybody. And before we go, I want to thank the entire panel for being here right now. What they're gonna do is they're gonna put their comments on their pieces of paper, we're gonna make copies of that, 20 different copies, and give it to everybody in the local school council. Before I go, I just want to say one thing to Chicago Magazine out there, Chicago Magazine, contrary to popular belief, I've got the toughest gang in town. Can I have a round of applause? We do have 50 minutes. Those were about the 10 questions that kept coming up over and over again. I will open the microphone up to anybody else that would like to ask the panel any questions at all. Do we have anybody that would like to ask a question? Okay?
I'd like to ask the student panel, you guys know the gang colors? Are you familiar with them?
All of them.
Well, what does blue represent?
Red.
Crisp, red? Alright, so is that the everybody from Taft and resurrection is a term for gang problems here? So if we walk out of our school with our blues on, we in trouble? I agree. I feel one of the students at the same school your principal came from, an elementary school, St. Terence's, and was my class in sixth grade, who took the initiative, who kids are taking today, to eliminate the dress code at St. Terence's. And he's a gentleman who agreed with, his graduate class was a benefit from what we all started in sixth grade. And so I am so happy that Mark is doing this for you kids. It's a remarkable thing that he's doing for you guys. What I hope you guys do is give back to him what he's doing for you.
And just so you know, they are, I guess, it's the beginning of the school year. I keep hearing things in my head all the time, we're in the office all the time. But I'm asking, guys, let's work on our attendance. Last year at this time, our attendance rate was 92.5 every day, the first, well, the first week. This whole week, it's been 98%. 98%. Give me a round of applause. First thing I do when I get here after I found the percent from Mr. Long over there is I have Chris on speed dial over at Lean Tech, and I get his voice going, I say, "You know what? We beat you again, you're getting this." Okay? So with that, do we have anything else for us?
I think we have a few more student questions.
Student question, come on up, someone. That's a focused man, I think.
Hello, Monse, I'm attending this award, I want to ask, how many times did Mr. Dorte have to book hits in the dean's office? This for you, not for me. Yeah, I'm attending the dean's office, because they come in there and they're not wearing the Taft uniform.
There were too many, probably.
Too many? Mr. Long, who you were in?
Two, I think.
Is there any other meeting? Well.
Let's have a round of applause for him.
I can appreciate your responses, and I think they're very well thought out. I don't agree with all of them. I think your previous dress code was hateless. I would drive by bus station every day, I'm like, ugh, you guys look awful. But having said that, I don't want to see kids standing at the bus stop in ridiculous outfits. Like, and girls, I'm sorry, you're the worst offenders. You ladies sitting here, dressed appropriately. I don't want to see girls hanging out in leggings. Leggings are not pants. They should have something covered in their booties, because I know that's what we're wearing, um, so that the boys, well, I don't want to see that. I don't want to see guys, I know you guys said that the saggy pants would be taken care of. And it's not a rebellious thing, that's part of your pop culture, and that trend actually started in prison. So I don't know why you don't walk around saying you're available, that's just ridiculous outfit. I think you should have no dress code. You should be able to wear what you want, but I also think you should hold up a standard as your teachers do. Your principal can't come to school however dressed he wants to, neither can your teachers. So why shouldn't you be accountable? Why shouldn't you say, "Okay, we don't have a dress code, but we have to dress appropriately." You are all dressed appropriately, he's a dress appropriately. I like what you're wearing. But you know what? It's just gonna take a couple of people to ruin it for everybody, and that's what I'm afraid of.
Just real quick, because I'm gonna rebut first. Dress code was never on the table here, it's always been the uniform. There's always gonna be a dress code here, and I think that's what the LSC is gonna hash out after this, whether or not uniforms, yes or no. And if it is a dress code, what that appropriate dress code is gonna be. So dress code was never off the table, that's always been, gonna be a matter.
A school culture in regards to clothing, pop culture and clothing are tied together, cannot be created when there is a standard uniform. Now, that standard can be created once we have the opportunity to dress how we want to do, and how kids are viewed when they wear. When I see a kid in like a nice porteroy tie and wearing a nice shirt, as Kevin often does, that is how it dresses often, I become personally jealous, and then I have to ask my parents, you know, "Dad, oh my God, I need to start looking better, look like I dress like I'm from 2007." So, to answer your question, we need to have time to create that culture. And now with this, we have that opportunity to create this school culture that sets a standard for proper dress. And with the uniform, we did not have that opportunity. Thanks, Matt.
I just wanted to address the idea of the leggings, and also sweatpants. I know that this is a big issue currently with the kids. With leggings, there's proper ways to wear them, you know. I disagree with the idea that girls wear leggings so that boys look at their buns. I truly, yeah, I mean, I know. Yeah, not all girls, you know. And really, adolescence is a time, you know, where they're learning, you know, expressing themselves, discovering who they are. And it's a factor of degree, you know, like, oh, why are these black pants okay and not these black pants? So I like the way that one of the students put, it has to be appropriate in content and fit, you know. And so I think, you know, if there is an issue with, you know, something that a girl is wearing, you know, it would be to that fit idea, and instead of saying no leggings whatsoever, you know. So I think, yeah. I get it, I understand what you're saying, but yeah, but I think that if we do put something where there's no leggings, it's like a, it's a, you know, a shade of gray, you know, that's, these are leggings, these are not leggings. Because there's also some jeans that are just as tight as leggings, you know. So I think we can address that on the fit portion, so.
Good afternoon to the panel, to the guests. I'd like to ask a simple question, and I'm a little perplexed by the fact that I came into this auditorium today expecting a very full auditorium of students. I don't see that this afternoon. Being on the local school council and having an IB vote as community representative, I do have to ask, why do you think that this is the only turnout we have today?
I think, I'm not a student, I know it's hard to believe, but I think a big reason right now, Mr. David, is that there's tons of sports going on, my son's running the halls, there's volleyball, there's softball, there's karate, I'm only known one of my son's teachers this year, so I want to meet up with their teacher. So I think there's a lot going on. So not having your child in the school and just being in the community, you have no way of knowing that. So that's where everybody is. Thank you.
Yeah, right now, I believe our soccer team is being found stupid, I think our golf team right now is being wooden young. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that change takes time. So this was, the petition and surveys were conducted almost a year ago, which means that although student interest and attention may have somewhat deviated, there still is this widespread feeling of desire for this change. And I think that's been showing. We do have students here today, I've spoken to people in the halls, I've spoken to people in classes, people I've never met before, people from brand-new classes who are very happy with the change. Teachers recognize the change. Teachers are loving this. They get the chance to really, instead of having to police their students, they get the chance to just teach. They don't have to worry about sticking to these excessive school rules, they don't have to worry about what qualifies as uniform. Everything that's been done so far, for the most part, my teachers, at least, have very much enjoyed, and I can definitely say the students have done the same.
Thank you very much.
I think that people are here because we have trust in them, that we have trust that they're gonna do whatever. My next legging as a student, sometimes when girls wear certain leggings, it is inappropriate. Also, sometimes girls buy sizes too small, but I know that when I wear leggings, they fit me well, and when I buy, some of those leggings are the same as Victoria's Secret yoga pants, and those are, those are the same, so we're allowed to wear those. So I wear those, and most other girls wear those too, and they're not too true. And also, if you're wearing boots, how could you tell if they're yoga pants or not? So, I mean, I do respect, you know, whoever said, you know, that they're inappropriate, but I do have my own opinion, and I don't think that they're that bad unless you're wearing them too small, or you're wearing like the galson ones or the cross ones where they are actually seether.
Thanks for that.
One more thing that I would like to point out in regards to that is leggings, saggy jeans, take no place in school uniform. School uniform itself is what's the question today, and what's going to be the big question after that, if that has changed our rules, is what are we going to do with the dress code? And I can safely say that the CPS dress code basically says, "Wear clothes that fit comfortably and that provide you with adequate protection from whatever elements." Basically, they say, "Wear clothes." So any individuals who break these rules, given that it is a few, can simply be dealt with. There are disciplinary practices which can be employed for students who used to fight the dress code or fight the uniform. These same practices can be employed now for a much smaller population, which means that, for example, the dean's office security ward may not be, they may not have quite as much to do, which means that they may be more effective in the cases in which they do pursue students, which they do penalize for dressing irresponsibly.
Alright, thank you. Megan, there's one more question, Megan.
Hi, it's not really a question, it's more of an example. Today, literally today, I was in gym, and my one friend had a shirt on that I really liked, and this is a friend that I met today. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because the dress code that would be modified gave me the opportunity to meet three people today. And I wouldn't have even known that if this dress code wasn't modified. And another thing that I wanted to bring up really quick was, the prices on the dress code, or no, I'm sorry, the prices on the uniform is very extreme for me at least, because I'm overweight. I'm gonna be honest with you, I am a large size. I don't want to say it because it's pretty embarrassing, but it ranges to $17. And for me as a person, and my economic status, I don't have that amount of money to keep buying more and more uniform-type clothing. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Oh, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to say, thank you for your case, especially the excellent job. about your nice job, okay? Being a military guy, I'm very pro-uniform, actually. I don't think it'll be more conducive to your learning environment to have a uniform. I don't think it's of anything against your environment. If you did have a uniform. One thing I would like to address to one of the teachers who spoke earlier, who is human. I'm sending my children here to learn, okay? I'm all in on Taft. We can all pretty much say that, right? Are we all in on Taft? Or I'll put my foot down as a parent, so will my wife. As if the dress code gets to the point where certain numbers of students are violating it and you're not policing your own. Because Mr. Grisaver and the teachers, just like policemen, we can't be everywhere, okay? Obviously, the students that are on this panel, you guys represent this school incredibly, okay? Outstanding job today. However, we need you to help us police your own. And you guys are going to be on this board today. Mr. Grisaver, that's my wife and I, about three weeks ago. I came around school, watched the kids come in. I was very impressed. I only saw two students this whole week that were wearing something that was totally unacceptable. Like, beyond unacceptable, okay? For the most part, I think you guys did a great job. It's more of a statement than a question to you. I would just like to just say that you guys are a great example of what kids should be wearing to school, okay? And you have to help them police their own. I think a modified dress code for you guys is totally acceptable, especially if a case should push forward. Like my wife said, though, when it starts interfering with my child's ability to learn, okay? That's why I got to put my foot down. I think that's pretty fair, okay? Because we're all here to learn. Thank you very much. We are going to be respectful of everybody's time. About one minute early, I just want to say thank you to the panel out there.